Alderman Garza.
Here.
Alderman Masiacos.
Here.
Alderman Donnell.
Here.
Alderman Franco.
Here.
Alderman Seville. Alderman Hart Burns. Alderman Smith.
Here.
Alderman Bub.
Here.
Alderman Lopshy.
Here.
Alderman Jenkins. Alderman O'Connor. Mayor Urban.
President. Please rise as we have a moment of silence in honor of our active servicemen and service women as well as our veterans. Please remain standing as we say the Pledge of Allegiance to be followed by the invocation. Alderman Hart Burns will introduce our pastor this evening, Pastor Scott Hodge. Moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This evening, the pastor that will bring us the invocation will be Pastor Scott Hodge. Tonight's invocation is led by him. He's a pastor of the Orchard Church and Society Fifty-Seven. Located at One Hundredth South River Street. Society Fifty-Seven is a new seven-day-a-week social space in the former Hocus Motor Building. The Fifty-Seven is named the 1857 when the village of Easton Westboro united to become One Aurora. Society Fifty-Seven is a coffee shop and will be celebrating its grand opening with a ribbon-cutting celebration this Friday, November fifteenth, from one, at three p.m. Would you please receive Pastor Scott Hodge. His father, Larry Hodge, a very dear friend of mine. Scott.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor and City Council, for the invitation to lead us in prayer this evening. It's an honor to do so, especially now as neighbors. And we look forward to welcoming all of you and all of you and watching Society Fifty-Seven become, I guess, a part of your life as well. Would you bow your heads with me and let's pray. Creator, God of this world and of this community, we take a moment this evening to pause and to offer our gratitude for the opportunity and privilege it is to serve the people of this great city. We are also grateful to be here at this time and in the midst of so many good and exciting things that are happening in our city. We recognize, however, that seasons of growth and seasons of progress also tend to bring with them unique challenges. Challenges that call us into new ways of thinking and seeing. So tonight, I pray that you would continue to fill the hearts and the minds of our leaders with great wisdom and insight. And we ask that in those moments, when those challenges come, that require us to move beyond the usual or the typical ways of thinking, that you would bring forth fresh and creative ideas and solutions that would further lead us into becoming the city and the people that you have created us to be. We thank you and we pray these things together. And everyone said?
Amen.
Thank you, sir.
There are motion to approve the minutes of Tuesday, October twenty-second, twenty nineteen, City Council meeting. Motion made by Alderman Hart Burns, second by Alderman Franco. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries by voice vote. There are motion to approve the appointment of a sergeant-at-arms for this meeting. Motion made by Alderman Hart Burns, second by Alderman Franco. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries by voice vote. Let us start off this meeting with some presentations. Mr. Mohammed.
Evening, Mayor, and you and City Council. We have a whole set of presentations this evening to crown our new Little Mister and Miss Aurora that we'll save for the final presentation so they can see some of the other great things that are going on in Aurora and our new leaders will get to represent this next year. The first presentation tonight is for an individual who has helped to preserve history here in Aurora. The twenty nineteen Landmarks Illinois Award for Stewardship this year was presented to the Ford House on Edzon, you see, we know well, and its owner, Sidney Robinson. The Ford House has been recognized on account of the home's owner and his ongoing stewardship in the maintenance of the iconic nineteen fifty Brooks Golf Design House in Aurora. Robinson has owned the house since nineteen eighty-six and has undertaken the difficult task of restoring its original unique features. Although the home remains a private residence, he's always shared the house for instruction and artistic interpretation. In case you haven't seen the inside of the house, just really briefly, we'll do a one-minute tour.
Wow.
Someone walking in here immediately makes a conscious move because his imagination has recontextualized it in a stunning way. That's okay if you've got the house in brown because you spin them in a circle to make them not like conscious. You get a round plan. So it's not that he chose not going to make a round palace. It was the sequence of decision-making beginning with the materials, which is very much a way an architect works.
Of course, it's had its complications. It produces an extraordinary number of strange details. So there are also moments in the ceiling where they scrub. And then that has to hit coal and it has to hit the wood on the ceiling. And so it's thinking about how all of those things come together. So that's also an example of the materials pushing the architecture forward in terms of new kinds of detailing.
A woman we know well who raised here to become a staple here in the city of Aurora. Let's give a round of applause for Mr. Sidney Robinson. Thank you, Sidney. He won the Landmarks Illinois Award for Stewardship for thirty-plus years of preserving history. We'll come right down to the center. Preserving history and keeping it alive and vibrant for the city of Aurora. Tonight, he'll receive the Mayor's Award of Excellence for his work and for receiving this distinguished award. One more big round of applause for Mr. Sidney. Thank you, Mr. Robinson. Big round of applause again. Tonight, we also are in honor, two percent, on behalf of the National Association for County, Community, and Economic Development, the Award of Excellence nationally in the Economic Development category presented to the city of Aurora in recognition of the Aurora Downtown Revitalization Project here in Aurora. We'd ask our representatives to come down from neighborhood redevelopment and the community builders and anyone from ACTA that they're here, let's give them a round of applause. If they could stand there, please. He'll also receive the Mayor's Award of Excellence. The Forty-Fourth Annual Conference was held last month in Arizona and the city of Aurora was recognized for its partnership to rebuild the former Wobonzi Community College campus, which is now the Dunham Arts Center, the Paramount School of the Arts, and the Arts and Laws, and the soon-to-be Amy Morgan Stope Island Social House, which will open shortly. Thanks to those efforts, Aurora's been recognized nationally by the NACCED. One more big round of applause. And the Aurora Civic Center Authority. Tonight is also our quarterly staff meeting. We like to honor our staff members who are doing some pretty amazing things. We have two individuals who like the last award and received national and international recognition. First, we know her well as our police chief here in Aurora. But just last week, she was elected the Vice President of the International Association of the Chiefs of Police. Please welcome Chief Kristen.
She is the international Vice President now.
With more than thirty thousand members in a hundred and sixty countries, the IACP is the recognized leader in global policing, committed to advancing safer communities. Tonight, we begin our new tradition of honoring those who receive national and international recognition with the Shine the Light Award. Chief, if you could flick under the bottom and shine the light for us. Get the individual picture, but don't leave chief. We have some international folks who are with us as well. She does an amazing job representing this city. Also, a week and a half ago, we had another leader here in our staff who received national recognition. Our Chief Information Officer, Mike Piggy, was named the Twenty-Nineteen National Smart City Leader of the Year. He is recognized for implementing new and clearly industry-respected smart city standards and initiatives in Aurora. Let me tell you, the list of nominees that he was competing against includes the innovative and tech leaders from the cities of New York, Atlanta, and Madison, and he put Aurora on the map as the National Smart City Leader of the Year. Round of applause for Mike Piggy.
Turn the light on, Chief. Turn the light on.
Turn the light on.
Is it solar?
Well, wait, there's more. We have one more national leader that was recognized in September. By the United States Conference of Mayors, he was recognized as the Twenty-Nineteen Small Business Advocate of the Year. Of fourteen hundred mayors in America, he was rated Number One for Supporting Small Businesses, our very own Mayor Richard Seaver. There's Shine the Light here in Aurora and all over America in the case of Chief Zima all over Aurora. I should have had a side of ice off there. One more big round of applause for our staff. And tonight. Tonight, we look forward to recognizing young leaders here in the city of Aurora with our Little Mister and Miss Aurora titles. These young people represent the youth of the city of Aurora. Nearly fifty submissions came in this year for the community contest. Each contestant had to submit a one-minute video explaining why they should be Little Mister or Miss Aurora. Ten judges ranked the videos in the following categories: confidence in articulation, authenticity, the best use of a full minute, and the wow or the awe factor. Kind of goes together. Judges only had knowledge of the names and ages per group, and our ten finalists are here with us tonight. But before we recognize these ten young leaders, we appreciate our current Little Mister Aurora and Little Miss Aurora, who for the last year have represented this city in the most excellent fashion. Let's give a round of applause to Little Mister Aurora, Benjamin Mendoza, and Little Miss Aurora, Alaria Selman. Come on down. The mayor has a special presentation first to read for Alaria and then for Benjamin.
All right, it is my honor to read this proclamation for Alaria. Selman Day, February twenty-second. Alaria Selman was crowned the Twenty-Nineteen Little Miss Aurora on Tuesday, November thirteen, twenty eighteen, in conjunction with Benjamin Mendoza, being crowned Little Mister Aurora on the same day. And whereas Alaria has dutifully represented the youth of Aurora during events, parades, and festivals throughout the entire year, all while setting an example of excellence and selfless service for her peers and our entire community. Now therefore, I, Richard Seaver, and Mayor of Aurora, do hereby proclaim her birthday of February twenty-second as Alaria Day in the city of Aurora from this point forward to encourage all Auroras to celebrate this special occasion. All right, the proclamation for Benjamin Mendoza. Whereas Benjamin Mendoza was crowned the Twenty-Nineteen Little Mister Aurora on Tuesday, November thirteen, twenty eighteen, in conjunction with Alaria, being crowned Little Miss Aurora on the same day. And whereas Benjamin dutifully represented the youth of Aurora during events and parades and festivities throughout the entire year, all while setting an example of excellence and selfless service for his peers and for our entire community. Now therefore, I, Richard Seaver, and Mayor of Aurora, do hereby proclaim his birthday, February thirteenth, as Benjamin's Day in the city of Aurora from this point forward and encourage all Auroras to celebrate this special occasion.
I'm gonna take this opportunity as well, we're up there to thank the ambassadors. We appreciate you, the sacrifice, you making the time, working with moms and dads. We appreciate all of you, but directly, mom, at the most direct contact. Thank you for the choice, the show, and all of the thanks all around. We truly appreciate you. We have to say thank you to our followers from both. If you could please give a round of applause to Benjamin Mendoza. We'll have to come on down, we'll have to have Dad come down too, so we can remember who the man is. Again, we told him, uh, a lot of our twenty-year fans, give a round of applause. They will crown our winners in just a moment. We have one more gift for both of you on behalf of our staff here for the kids. Are you ready for this year's contestants and winners? Ten finalists, five young guys, five young ladies. Pictures are on the screen. Who will be the next Little Mister or Miss Aurora? Thank you to our special events department, Gina Mova, Magnusson, Carly Thomas. We have special gifts, trophies, gift bags, personalized items, and a certificate from the mayor as well. Please join me in welcoming our first one in alphabetical order for boys, Rayan Aslan. Individual picture with the mayor, then a group picture. Rayan's a five-year-old from the Wheatlands Elementary School. Oh, that's quite good here. I was like, oh, your voice projects all first. All right, I'm sure. Okay, well, she's got a jump on him. This is his twin sister. Please give a round of applause for Zara Aslan, who also favors all the force from the Wheatlands as well. They're all winners tonight. All right, even applause for Rayan. Now, a little bit of courage, man. He's eleven years old from Greenman. Please give a round of applause for James Howard. She's eight years old from McClary Elementary School. Big round of applause for Romina Esparza. He's ten years old from Freeman Elementary School, Peter Schmidt. She's nine years old from Greenman Elementary School, Mia Howard. He's seven years old from Ferent Elementary School, Kaden Turner. She's seven years old from Hill Elementary School, Juliana Kluber. He's nine years old from Hermis Elementary School, Elijah Valenz. And she's nine years old from the Dunham STEM School at Aurora University, Hayden Malloy. Aurora, can we give a big round of applause for our... Zara, Romina, Miriam, Juliana, and Hayden. They will all be leading us in the Winter Life Parade next Friday, November twenty-second, with our Little Mister and Miss Aurora Twenty-Twenty will lead the procession. This year's, if we can ask first, maybe first, we can ask Alaria to come and stand with the mayor. Mary, come back closer instead of here. Ask the marshal to help put on her sash and crown, as she has to thank you, Alaria, again for everything you've done. Our Little Miss Aurora Twenty-Twenty?
Yes.
Romina Esparza. You earned your crown, you get that. Paradise, that's how sweet she is all the time. Bitchy, come on down, buddy. Bitchy, again, thanks for everything. I'm very proud of you, did a great job this year. Benjamin has he crowned our new Little Mister Aurora, Peter Schmidt. Give a round of applause. We have all the kids that squeeze a little bit, the mayor to come behind, we're gonna do a group picture. Okay, everybody can look this way, angle this way, you can see everything in front of you, look this way. Big round of applause, ladies and gentlemen. And then grab one, and any of the parents can help out. When the mayor calls for a break, and I ask everyone to stay seated, when the mayor calls for a break, then we will take you upstairs and talk about it. One more round of applause, ladies and gentlemen. I need a little help out here.
Now Clayton, can you, um, now, all the young kids are gonna be part of the parade, so all the families go upstairs?
All the families will go to the third floor with Gina Mova.
Okay. All right, we are about to get started on our regular portion of the business, so, yeah, I know we got some young ones with it tonight to have to get upstairs and get some instruction and head off and go home and go to bed and get ready for school tomorrow. So at this time, unless you want to stay for the regular portion of the agenda, I'll give you guys a few minutes to file out. And all the participants will be going upstairs to the third floor. All right, let's, um, head on to the next portion of the agenda for this evening under public comment. Madam clerk, do we have any members of the public wishing to offer public comment?
We do, Mayor.
Will you read the preamble, please?
Pursuant to the Open Meetings Act, all persons shall be permitted an opportunity to address public officials under the rules established and recorded by the council. Under our rules, any person may address the city council for up to three minutes with a maximum of thirty minutes allotted for all public comment. No person other than the timekeeper or the chair for the purpose of maintaining order may interrupt a person recognized for public comment during his or her comments. Members of the city council shall not engage with nor respond to a speaker during the time set aside for public comment. Staff is directed to follow up with members of the public with respect to any concerns raised during public comment within the scope of the city's authority following the adjournment of this. raised during public comment within the scope of the city's authority following the adjournment of this meeting.
Alright, will you call the first speaker, madam clerk?
Marcus Sabo.
Mr. Sabo, you have three minutes.
Good evening, Mayor Irvin and members of the city council. My name is Marcus, and when I was here last month, I talked to you about the Wayside situation, which is a very personal situation for me. I said all of us caught up in this are scared and confused. Why are we confused? Well, McCarty Park has been in its location since the eighteen hundreds. The new Wayside building was built five years ago with the city's full blessing. The laws have not changed, yet suddenly our residents, and for some of us, our employment is in jeopardy. Why is that? Well, the city may be measuring the distance between them differently now than in the past. After years of this being a valid address to live at, things are now suddenly different? After no problems ever occurring? But what are we really talking about here? About twelve feet is the difference, less than the width of your living room. Think about that. Men may be homeless and unemployed now because a different measuring tool was used than in the past, and all over about a dozen feet, so yes, we are frightened and confused. So I ask if all of you really knows what it means to be part of the Masters Touch program at Wayside. Some of you may have had friends or family members that were part of the program, but do you really know what involves? First of all, Wayside does not accept everyone. Program only accepts men who are serious about turning their life around. It is not for overnight stays or temporary housing. Men must read and agree to a long list of rules and regulations. If they are not able to follow them at any time, they are asked or told to leave immediately. They must give up their cellphone for seven months, computer use is limited to Christian and educational websites. Men can't even leave the property for between the first thirty and one-hundred-and-twenty days they are there. The men attend a ninety-minute Bible study class every morning, six days a week, that's followed by an eight-hour workday, then chapel services every night. And in between, there are homework packets they must complete, between ten and forty pages every single week. Go along with scripture memory and meeting with their church mentor. They must work toward their GED if they have not already obtained it. Eventually, they attend the local church for worship services and fellowship. It is not an easy program, and it is only for men who are serious about the Wayside. Received no government subsidies at all while there. But now, if we are told we can't stay there, around twenty men will then be homeless in the streets of downtown Aurora. Now they would be in need of city, state, and federal services. Is that really a better solution when all we are talking about here is about a dozen feet? I said this last time, and I'll say it again, we are people with names. We are citizens of Aurora, and we are people with lives that matter. Would not this city be stronger by including people who have made mistakes in the past and then worked very hard to repair the damage done and come out stronger on the other side? This is too great a city to miss that opportunity, and you are too strong a leader to not see the reward this can bring to the city of life. It is not too late to find a solution that benefits everyone in Aurora. Thank you.
Next speaker, clerk.
Mr. L. Ollier.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. The aldermen of Aurora greet all of you. The reason why I came here this evening, I'm not going to take too long. I came here because we have a big problem in the taxation of some of the businesses. The one that I have problem with is the gas stations. Gas station provide us with so many things. Without the gasoline, it can't go no bit. You came here because you fill your tank with gasoline. Our gasoline stations are the most taxed entity in the city of Aurora. We have what they call county motor fuel tax, four cents for every gas, every gallon that they sell. And you have to pay the state tax on top of that. These people that run gas stations are cash shop. They work from morning till midnight. Sometimes they don't even go home, some of them make backs in their gas stations so that they can keep their places open. But what brought me here this evening? I am an accountant, I take care of most of these people. I've been in Aurora for almost fifty years, a lot of this town. This town has made me what I am today. I grew up here, and I want this town to go the way we are going. And I thank the aldermen, especially the mayor, for the good job you people are doing. My problem is that, on holidays, the finance department wants those young guys that run the gas station to pay their tax on weekends. By federal law, if the date the tax are due fall on weekend, the tax day is moved to Monday. In the city of Aurora, if the tax day falls on Sunday, they want you to pay it on Friday. If you don't pay it on Friday, you get a heavy penalty. I talked to the financial chairman, I said, why is that? Every state, every, the federal government, every city, if the tax due date falls on weekend, the tax day move to working day, which is Monday.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate your comments.
So I'm bringing this to...
I'm gonna have to ask the clerk to call, just, I'm sorry, sir, clerk, you're gonna have to call the next speaker, but somebody from, um, our staff will follow up with you.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Clerk, can you call the next speaker?
Sean Thomas.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. Um, my name is Sean Thomas, I'm a member of IBW Local 461, with the Electrical Workers Union, that has served the Aurora community since nineteen thirteen. Um, I'm here to speak on behalf of the Avalon Project at the old Copley Hospital. Um, this project would mean good construction jobs for members of this community. It would mean good, uh, jobs, long-term jobs for members of this community after the project is over, after the construction is over. Also, it means increased tax revenue for the city for years to come. After listening to all the awards that were given out tonight, this city is clearly, um, focused on revitalization, this project will help you guys along your path. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Bert Jones.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members and attendees. I'm also here from 461 IBW, and I'm here to, uh, address the Avalon Heights Project. It would be a fantastic idea to have that, just, the long issues, we could just, that's, that neighborhood. I worked in that neighborhood last year, relinked all the east of our schools. I saw your picture there, Mr. Mayor, Eastside. And, uh, I did all relighting the schools for us into LED. I work on a school across the street, I'll take warrants at hospital, my brother, my officer, she's spent a lot of time. So it'd be nice to see something done with that. With the presentation they had last week, it was pretty fantastic, they, they know what they're doing. These guys had their act in there. I think it'd be fantastic for the community, for City of Aurora. And, uh, congratulations to all the award winners, Mr. Mayor, for your award. It's fantastic what's going on here in Aurora, all the revival going on, it's, it's incredible. Everything was closed up for so long, it's really great to see it going on.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Next speaker, clerk.
Rachel Peters.
My name is Rachel Peters, I just wanted to also say a quick few words about the construction and development going on all around. I'm with MM Peters Construction, four generations born and raised here in Aurora. Um, we're a certified DVE, union, commercial concrete contractor, women owned and women run. I'm also the vice president of the National Association of Women in Construction out of Chicago. We're getting ready to start on the M8 Tolei Project here on I-88 in Aurora, as well as the old Copley Site Development that they're, uh, speaking about with the addition for 131. Uh, we're involved in also working on some of the restoration and development going on on River Street. It's great to have this work continuing and even starting now as the cold months settle in, when usually we're ending work, and now we're getting ready to get busy. Um, the majority of the work we've had in the past years has been out of this area. Ninety-five percent of our employees also live and are raising their families here in Aurora, and with these new developments happening, with the focus on hiring locally, as well as women owned and minority construction companies, um, we're in the process of sponsoring new Aurora residents into the union apprenticeship programs, as this all continues to go on. It's a great feeling to leave the job sites at the end of the day, and instead of spending our time commuting from Chicago where the airports and stuff, we're home and able to make it to our kids' events and school activities at the end of the day. So just on behalf of my family, um, my employees, I'd like to thank all of you and, uh, encourage you to vote yes. I'd like to thank the unions, Fox Valley developers, and, um, everyone else involved on all levels for these developments and supporting this work, supporting women in construction, and continue to make Aurora an outstanding place to, uh, to work and to grow business.
Thank you. Next speaker, clerk.
Mavis Bates.
Good evening, thank you, Mayor, thank you, aldermen and all the women. My name is Mavis Bates, and I'm a member of Sustainable Aurora. The mayor is, uh, the mayor's advisory board for sustainability. I'm here today to thank you for approving the newly revised City of Aurora Sustainability Plan. You didn't approve it yet, but you're about to, I hope. Please don't change your mind in the next five minutes. Uh, first, I need to thank our late mayor, Tom Weisner, uh, for his vision in creating our first sustainability plan that was signed in, uh, two thousand nine. I was honored to be one of the contributors on that plan ten years ago. I have a copy for show and tell, uh, that's the two thousand nine version. Uh, then in two thousand fifteen, Mayor Weisner created Sustainable Aurora as an advisory board to help our city achieve its full potential in creating our sustainable future. I also need to thank Mayor Richard Irvin for his continued support for our team, thank you, Mayor. Uh, our new plan offers a strategy for making Aurora a city second to none for preserving our environment and enhancing our quality of life for future generations. This is a big deal. The new plan has been simplified, been more strategic and more flexible as our technology and society change. We added three new sections to the old version, climate change, resilience, and environmental justice. And we've used the frame, framework from the Greenest Region Compact, putting Aurora in alignment with the Metropolitan Mayor's Caucus. We retain the basics of sustainability, this should be like motherhood and apple pie. Sustainable development, clean, green transportation and infrastructure, energy efficiency, education and engagement, waste management, and water preservation and conservation. Whoa, the new section on climate change includes ways that our people can help with climate mitigation, helping to stop climate change through energy efficiency and clean renewable energy. Um, with the new section on environmental justice, we want sure that all of our neighborhoods and all of our people share all of the benefits of our sustainable city. Thank you again for approving, or about to approve, the City of Aurora, the new City of Aurora Sustainability Plan. Your Sustainable Aurora Mayor's Advisory Board stands ready and willing to make this plan become a reality.
Thank you. Clerk, can you call the next speaker?
Brian Dahl.
Brian Dahl, President of Fox Valley Building and Construction Trades Council, Mayor Irvin, City Council. I'm speaking in regards to Resolution nineteen dash oh nine seven four, the authorization, authorizing the execution of a redevelopment agreement with Fox Valley Developers LLC for the Avalon Heights Development. I would just like to reiterate what I stated at last week's committee of the whole meeting in regards to this resolution and development, by stating that on behalf of all the affiliates and members of the Fox Valley Building and Construction Trades Council, I stand here today in support of this resolution. This resolution will help provide the needed resources for this development to be completed. The Avalon Heights Development is a huge investment by the developers and the city, which will benefit the, uh, city as a whole. And we, the Fox Valley Building and Construction Trades Council, look forward to working with the Fox Valley Developers in this next phase of construction as they have committed to utilizing our union members and contractors. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Clerk, can you call the next speaker?
Rick Lawrence.
I congratulate you guys on all your awards, you much can do it. I was recently out in Colorado visiting my daughter, and she's received a bunch of texts and emails from people in the fourth ward. And here we go again, there's talk about rebuilding Jericho Circle. You know, there was a group of the people in the fourth ward, the entire school board, the superintendent, and even HUD was on our side and said that the place needs to be demolished, help those people escape the deplorable conditions that were down there. And even HUD stated that the place, that location, wasn't suitable for any type of housing. It had no amenities, it didn't have transportation, it was isolated, it was nothing more than a warehouse area for people. But what do we do? We wait a couple of years, and we bring it back up. At that time, they had the opportunity to donate that property to the park district. There are rules that can't mothball the property, so they moved their offices in, in there so they're not mothballing the property. Get rid of the property, don't allow that property to be redeveloped again. Since we demolished Jericho Circle all that time ago, Lincoln School has been removed from it. So we have Freeman and Greeman left on the west side. Freeman now is a Title I school. So, it'll start off with this seventy-nine townhouse thing. Same plan that we defeated after it was demolished, and outside groups from up north and the, and Prairie Legal came down, tried to sue us to force us to build another one. Same plan, they were nice townhouses, they'll come in and tell you, oh, it's for seniors. And they'll start that one. And then in ten years, we'll be dealing with the same issue that we had again. A property isolated from the rest of the city, no services, no amenities. You're not gonna put seniors down there in the middle of a cornfield at the end of Aurora without store, nothing around the place, other than a bus and a food pantry. It's all you have now. Mr. Mayor, you've been doing some really good things down here, you're trying, we'll see how it all works out for you. That gets built, there's your legacy, the guy that rebuilt Jericho Circle. It's not gonna work out, don't listen to fancy pictures, don't even allow the conversation to start. Because once you do, then you got the outside legal people come in, and then they start suing the City of Aurora. They start forcing, they call us discriminatory. The City of Aurora does more than any other city around. It's time for Naperville and Geneva and everybody else to do their share. Thank you very much.
Clerk, can you call the next speaker?
Margie Lockman.
Can somebody more advanced speak? Give a microphone for Ms. Lockman.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Um, I hope you all read my article on the voice concerning McCarty Park. Uh, it makes me glad my mother-in-law is gone. She spearheaded the restoration of McCarty Park back in the eighties. I have pictures of her cutting the ribbon, and I think she would be in great disappointment over the whole situation. Also, I would like to know why, as citizens who want to inquire about companies who are given millions of taxpayer money are denied access to background information even when it is a face-to-face request? It only causes suspicion, especially in relation to Copley. I do not appreciate city officials quotes in the paper to gain support for any development that our fear base has slanted to promote an agenda. Please remember, the electorate are intelligent and capable. Also, has the city looked at the environmental impact of being a smart city? Aurora City Council needs to be an example of not demeaning others to get their own way. Those who disagree or want more facts are not the enemy. They are caring, concerned citizens that see the need... They are caring, concerned citizens that see the need for plan adjustments not to defeat them. It seems the council only looks at Aurora through a narrow economic lens. We are more than that. It's not that we are opposed to new look or, or new ideas. We are looking for inclusivity. Thank you.
Clark, can you call the next speaker?
Roger Vernon.
Mr. Mayor, City Council, fellow citizens of Aurora. My name is Roger Vernon. I'm the Executive Chairman for Big Woods Marmion Neighborhood. Early in the twenty-first century, the City of Aurora recognized the need to improve communications between the staff and its citizens. As part of the Aurora Neighborhood Planning Initiative, several neighborhood planning areas were identified to address neighborhood improvements and concerns. Starting in December two thousand three, several meetings were held to focus on neighborhood concern and prioritize these concerns, gaining community support for a neighborhood association and develop an action plan to be presented to the Aurora City Council. On January twenty-third, two thousand five, the Big Woods Marmion Neighborhood Area Action Plan was the first plan to be approved by the City Council. In June of this year, the City Council approved purchase of ten lots on Biltor Road. Several citizens spoke out against the Hollywood Casino move to Biltor Road. At a public hearing, Mr. Dilbo, Aurora Director for Economic Development, said that there was no definite plans for the fifty acres along Biltor Road. Alderman Lamas requested Mr. Dilbo to work with the area residents and develop any developments along the Farnsworth Corridor. Mr. Dilbo agreed. At our quarterly meeting in July, virtually every residence in attendance was against moving the Hollywood Casino to Biltor Road. Mr. Dilbo repeated that the city had no plans to move Hollywood Casino. Subsequent to that meeting, I asked the members of ARC to recommend uses for the Biltor Road area. I then consolidated those uh, requests to a list of ten options. I then asked the residents to rate each of those options on a scale of one to five. I surveyed the residents, and, and on the backside of the, uh, this document that you have, uh, lists all of the ten priorities. The first option for Biltor Road was twofold: nature walk, uh, or nature and dog walk area. The second was a water park or sports center. A close third was a recreational facility. The least likely, or least uh, liked option was a casino. It had one-third the votes for the second worst option. Farnsworth Site, again, uh, water park, sports center, recreation facility, family entertainment, uh, amusement facility, fine arts facility were, uh, in the, in the top. The uh, first option was a sit-down restaurant, which was also in our twenty, uh, two thousand five recommendation. The cas, a casino was the second worst option. You have the, the full list on the backside.
Oh, I'm sorry. Uh, yeah. So, Clark, can you call the next speaker?
No further speakers, Mayor.
All right. That concludes public comment. Um, Clark, now please read the consent agenda info.
Eighteen dash one-one-five-five, a resolution authorizing the sale of real property owned by the city, commonly known as five ninety-four through five ninety-six Fifth Ave, Aurora, Illinois, to Trinidad Cervantes and Jose Carlos Cesado in the amount of eighty-one thousand dollars. Nineteen dash zero seven four-three, a resolution approving provisions to the City of Aurora Sustainability Plan to enhance the quality of life for present and future generations of Aurora by planning for natural, social, and economic resilience. Nineteen dash zero seven seven-eight, an ordinance adding Article Eight to Chapter forty-one point five of the code to the City of Aurora. Nineteen dash zero eight-two-nine, an ordinance granting a special use permit for a liquor license within five hundred feet of a residential property for the property located at nine eighteen North Highland Avenue. Nineteen dash zero eight-eight-three, a resolution authorizing an intergovernmental agreement extension between the City of Aurora and the Village of North Aurora. Nineteen dash zero eight-eight-six, a resolution to award a contract to Crawford, Murphy, and Tilly Incorporated for resident inspection and engineering services. Nineteen dash zero eight-nine-one, a resolution authorizing the Corporation Council and the Risk Manager for the City of Aurora to execute indemnification and hold harmless agreements with private property owners for exercise trainings taking place throughout the corporate limits of the City of Aurora for the FEMA Coordinated Complex Terrorist Attack Grant. Nineteen dash zero nine zero-three, a resolution authorization to purchase ARC server software from Environmental Systems Research Institute Incorporated of Redlands, California in the amount of thirty-four thousand dollars for the geographic information system mapping and the annual maintenance in the amount of ten thousand dollars. Nineteen dash zero nine one-four, a resolution approving a request for project change orders to append approved Resolution nineteen dash one-seven-five dated June eleventh, twenty nineteen for IT risk assessment by Data Defenders in an amount not to exceed fifty-four thousand dollars. Nineteen dash zero nine one-five, an ordinance proposing the establishment of a special service area number two-zero-one Poly USA Expansion vacant lots east of Russell Avenue and north of New Haven Avenue, and calling for a public hearing on the proposed special service area in the City of Aurora King County and providing for a public hearing and other procedures in connection therewith pins fifteen dash sixteen dash one-seven-seven dash zero-one-one and fifteen dash sixteen dash one-seven-seven dash zero-one-three. Nineteen dash zero nine two-eight, an ordinance amending Chapter forty-two, Section twenty-two of the City of Aurora Code of Ordinances entitled Mailboxes. Nineteen dash zero nine three-six, a resolution formalizing an intergouver- governmental agreement between the City of Aurora and the City of Naperville regarding reoccurring maintenance fees for a video conferencing system posted by the City of Aurora and utilized by the fire departments of both cities. Nineteen dash zero nine three-nine, a resolution authorizing H Three Services LLC to provide and install three protective liners in three existing sodium hypochlor- hypochlorite bulk storage tanks for the Water Production Division. Nineteen dash zero nine four-one, a resolution authorizing the purchase of Bulk World Salt in the amount of ninety-six dollars and twenty-five cents per ton for the twenty nineteen, twenty-twenty winter season from Compass Minerals America Incorporated, Oakland Park, Kansas, through the State of Illinois Joint Purchasing Agreement. Nineteen dash zero nine four-two, a resolution to amend the agreement with Dr. Friedman as a provider of psychological assessments for public safety candidates. Nineteen dash zero nine four-four, a resolution accepting the improvements in maintenance security for Sika Butterfield Colors six-twenty-five West Illinois Avenue. Nineteen dash zero nine four-nine, a resolution to approve the payment of thirty thousand dollars to the Fox Valley Park District to be used for the purchase and installation of trees and landscaping materials at the southeast corner of the intersection of Lake Street and Illinois Avenue in front of the Prisco Community Center on the Fox Valley Park District property. Nineteen dash zero nine five-zero, a resolution establishing the maximum number of Class C, Class F City of Aurora liquor licenses unofficially related to application from Taqueria Muis Mexican Food Incorporated, doing business as Muis Restaurant, five eighteen South Lake Street, Aurora, six oh five oh six. Nineteen dash zero nine five-one, a resolution establishing the maximum number of Class B City of Aurora liquor licenses unofficially related to application from Aurora Athletic Club, doing business as Aurora Athletic Club, five fifty Clearwater Drive, North Aurora, six zero five four-two. Nineteen dash zero nine five-two, a resolution establishing the maximum number of Class E City of Aurora liquor licenses unofficially related to application from Altero Aurora LLC, doing business as Altero Latin Fusion, one south Stolt Avenue, Aurora, six zero five zero six.
There's been a motion by Alderman Hartburns to accept the agenda, seconded by Alderman Franco. Are there any motions to remove any items from the consent agenda? Are there any, uh, question or discussion on the consent agenda? There being none, will the clerk please call a roll?
Alderman Yamas? Alderman Garza?
Yes.
Alderman Masiacos?
Yes.
Alderman Denell?
Yes.
Alderman Franco?
Yes.
Alderman Seville?
Yes.
Alderman Hartburns?
Yes.
Alderman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Bug?
Yes.
Alderman Lobshi?
Yes.
Alderman O'Connor?
Yes.
Eleven As.
All right. Motion carries. The consent agenda is approved. Clark, can we go on to unfinished business? Read the first item?
Nineteen dash zero nine four-five, a resolution establishing the maximum number of Class F City of Aurora liquor licenses unofficially related to application from Chipotle Mexican Grill Incorporated, doing business as Chipotle Mexican Grill, number three-four-six-eight, eleven sixty-seven North Yola Road, number one-oh-five, Aurora, six oh five oh two.
There's been a motion made by Alderman Hartburns, seconded by Alderman Garza. Questions or discussions? Alderman Bug, I believe you placed this on unfinished. Did you get the answer to your question about the background? Is there any other questions or discussion on this matter? Clark, will you please call a roll?
Alderman Yamas?
Yes.
Alderman Garza?
Yes.
Alderman Masiacos?
Yes.
Alderman Denell?
Yes.
Alderman Franco?
Yes.
Alderman Seville?
Yes.
Alderman Hartburns?
Yes.
Alderman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Bug?
Yes.
Alderman Lobshi?
Yes.
Alderman O'Connor?
Yes.
Eleven As.
Motion carries. The resolution is approved. Clark, will you read the next item?
Nineteen dash zero nine four-six, a resolution establishing the maximum number of Class F City of Aurora liquor licenses unofficially related to application from Taqueria Aurora, doing business as Taqueria Aurora, six four five North Elmwood Drive, Aurora, six oh five oh six.
There's been a motion by Alderman Hartburns, seconded-
Mr. Mayor, I have to interrupt here. I have to abstain from any vote. So, if I, it asks the Corporation Council, do I need to leave the room at this moment, or is there going to be discussion? Okay.
There's been a motion been made, well, for the record, Alderman Yamas has abstained and has left the council chambers. There is a motion on the floor from Alderman Hartburns to approve the item, seconded by Alderman Garza. Are there any questions or discussions on this item?
I do, Mr. Mayor.
Alderman Franco-
I was at the committee of the whole. Is the reason this is not unfinished business because Alderman Yamas had to-
That is correct. That's the only reason. Any other questions or discussions? There being none, Clark, will you please call a roll?
Alderman Garza?
Yes.
Alderman Masiacos?
Yes.
Alderman Denell?
Yes.
Alderman Franco?
Yes.
Alderman Seville?
Yes.
Alderman Hartburns?
Yes.
Alderman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Bug?
Yes.
Alderman Lobshi?
Yes.
Alderman O'Connor?
Yes.
Ten As.
All right. Motion carries. Resolution is approved. Clark, can you read the last item under unfinished business?
Nineteen dash zero nine seven-four, a resolution authorizing the execution of a redevelopment agreement with Fox Valley Developers LLC for the Avalon Heights Development.
There's been a motion made by, um, it threw me off a little bit, motion made by Alderman Seville, seconded by Alderman Hartburns. Before we go on to any question, discussion, is there present, a short presentation-
Mayor, I'm going to be abstaining from this item.
Or, um, let the record reflect that, um, Alderman Masiacos will be abstaining, and Alderman Masiacos is leaving the city council chambers.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, um, we had a pretty detailed, uh, presentation at the committee of the whole. So despite the crowd, we're going to make this pretty brief. Much has been said and much more has been done regarding the approval of the resolution before you authorizing the execution of the redevelopment agreement with Fox Valley Developers regarding the plans for renewal of the Cop, of the old Copley Hospital. I want to acknowledge the scores and scores of people who have played a part in helping us get here today. From historical consultants to state preservation experts, to financial analysts, to state preservation experts, lenders, accountants, housing experts, healthcare professionals, to experts in alternative housing concepts, to the hundreds and hundreds of people, uh, from union craftsmen and women, uh, to attorneys, to cost estimators, uh, all who have labored to get here, to get us here today. I do like the expression, "Don't let the perfect be the enemy of the good." While the staff has endeavored to work through all pertinent details, and Fox Valley has worked to cover all bases, there are unknowns, and the final project will not exactly mirror the exact projections that the accountants put together and the exact configuration, and even perhaps all the uses that are envisioned. This is development. This is development in a neighborhood where there's precious little of it, and this is not linear. What we do have is a site that has been cleaned up, a development plan that exemplifies the values of this city in education for seniors, for people with special needs, and for the very best in healthcare and job creation, all within a neighborhood setting. This is being facilitated with an outlay, an outlay from the city that we believe will come back to the city in quantifiable and in waves that are well, well beyond quantification. I want to acknowledge my fellow staff members, Marty Lyons, CFO, and our partner in economic development, John Curley, Kent Schroth, Herman Benneke, Ed Seben, Mike Piggas, Rick Vienstra, Brian Gay at Invest Aurora, who was very important in the, um, very beginning of this project, and I want to thank him as well. And of course, Kathy Leonard and our whole staff who worked very hard to get us here today. I want to thank the, the team of Fox Valley Developers who have been professional, responsive, and patient, and for whom, from whom I've learned a whole, a whole lot of things. Finally, I want to thank the Mayor and Alex Alexandra, who provided vision, inspiration, and direction, all the while allowing us, Marty and I and our whole team, to work through the myriad of issues and challenges that try to balance the interests of the city with the assistance to the developer to enable this project to move ahead. Um, with that, I want to turn it over, uh, to Mike Pulakides.
Thank you, uh, David. Mayor Irvin, members of the council and staff, on behalf of the entire team at Fox Valley Developers, Russ Warman, Ron Warman, Stathie Pulakides, Paul Conrad, and Jason Conrad, who could not be here due to the weather, time, consideration, part, and partnership. We are honored to stand before you this evening with a viable and immediate plan to finally repurpose the old Copley campus. I would be happy to answer any questions about our proposal and the redevelopment agreement, but I believe it is one of the toughest, most rigorous, and important agreements in the history of the east side of Aurora. I want to stay focused on the future, but it's important to remember how and why we are here this evening. In eighteen eighty-eight, the Aurora Hospital was founded, and over the following century, the campus was expanded with various wings, with the last expansion occurring in the nineteen eighties. In nineteen ninety-five, Copley moved out, and the neighborhood lost its anchor, and a three-hundred-thousand-square-foot hulking campus sat waiting for investment. And as it sat and sat and sat, our society was transformed and went through immense change. When the campus was closed, keep in mind, Windows ninety-five was revolutionizing home computing. Amazon was in its infancy, and Google was only an idea. You see, Mayor and Council, in the time since Copley Campus closed, life has moved on and history has been made, and the quality of life for so many has improved. However, in the case of the Bardwell neighborhood, a neighborhood, I must stress, that is rich in history, this past quarter of century has been clouded by the uncertainty over the Copley campus, which through delay suffered decay. In two thousand and three, as was mentioned earlier, the city put together a neighborhood action plan for this neighborhood, a family-oriented neighborhood that is full of hard-working, concerned, and diverse citizens with a plethora of family-oriented and owned businesses and a tradition rich in historical significance that has a proximity to the downtown. Ironically, that plan had hoped that there would be a redeveloped Copley Hospital site by twenty twenty. Instead of lifting this neighborhood up to even greater heights, however, the property has been a source of blight and fright to schoolchildren at Bardwell Elementary, East Aurora School District's largest elementary school. And that is why Fox Valley Developers is here this evening, not just for our project, but to do something that improves our community. We respectfully ask for your partnership so that we may deliver on the promise, unlock the potential of the Bardwell neighborhood, and create a renewed sense of pride, purpose, and prosperity at this iconic and historical campus. The journey to this evening has been a professional and personal adventure of a lifetime for myself, my business partners, and the team we've assembled to go from vision to reality. If we are so fortunate to receive your approval tonight, this phase of planning will end, but our journey will just be beginning. And I want to thank some of our key partners who have signed up to be part of this new innovative living community. Guarded Management Solutions, an Illinois-based success story, will manage our senior living component. Vituity, a physician-owned and physician-led partnership, will help us bring back neighborhood healthcare to the campus and work alongside my brother, our medical director. Family Focus will help nurture children by strengthening families with a location at the campus. Families in need of a long-term solution for their adult children with cognitive and developmental disabilities will benefit from the creation of Aurora Life, an independent apartment community. The East Aurora School District will benefit from a new consolidated administrative center- The East Aurora School District will benefit from a new consolidated administrative center next to their largest elementary school. Our investment team, Enhanced Capital, US Bank Capital One, Sterling Bank and the National Trust Corp, Investment Corporation. Our other partners, Kluber Architects, Cordigan Clark, Attorney Alan Gerrell and the countless others who have helped. This is truly an amazing team of partners and I'm honored each of them believe in Aurora's future as we in this room do. In total, with these investors and our equity contributions, we have raised one hundred and nineteen point five million dollars to be invested and put to work improving the community with, as you've seen, a labor force that is excited to get to work. As we've detailed at committee meetings, the size, scope and magnitude of this adaptive reuse requires partnership from the city and we need your help to close the gap. Your staff, who I have to thank, have been fierce negotiators on behalf of the city and the taxpayers and we've come to something that has enabled this long-desired renewal to move forward while minimizing the risk and obligations of the city. As with any project, however, there is risk, but our team promises to tackle the construction and development of this project with the same passion, energy and love for the community that you have seen from us to this date. As with any project, we have completed our feasibility studies and have created our contingencies. If the certificate of need were to tragically get caught up in the politics of this state, when this state has the power to bring development and business to an area of town in their second-largest city that is in need of development, then we will put forth our added residential plan to the project to ensure that this team, our investors and lenders and this great city are given every chance of its success. But instead of being negative, let's all fight together to make sure that this CON happens at the campus of this city's great, of this great city's original hospital. Many of you have gotten to know our team and know the value we place on keeping our word. That is why the redevelopment agreement calls for this incentive to be tied to the successful completion of construction benchmarks and occupancy permits. Your vote tonight will unlock a one-time stimulus providing seven hundred and forty jobs and local income of fifty-two point five million dollars and two hundred and sixty permanent jobs providing seventeen million dollars in annual income. Your vote tonight will create vibrant residential living solutions at a thriving innovative campus next to our growing and revived downtown core. Your vote tonight will renew the campus, create open space, landscape walking trails and parkland to improve the quality of life in the neighborhood. Your vote tonight will solve a problem that has vexed the city of Aurora for a quarter of a century and usher in a new century of prosperity, pride and purpose at a property important to Aurora's history. We are here tonight on behalf of our investors, partners, laborers and tenants to tell you we're ready, willing and able to act. I would be remiss if I did not close by thanking my business partners, who I consider my brothers. We have spent thousands of hours together while at this podium, uh, this is, while I'm at this podium, this is a team effort and I, we could not have done it without each other. It is truly an honor to present with them tonight and I could not be prouder of what we have been able to accomplish together and what we will do together to move Aurora forward. I want to thank all of our partners and advisors who have helped us get to this point. There are too many to individually thank, but dozens and dozens of professionals, experts have helped us refine the vision. Mayor Irvin, members of the council and staff, I thank you for your partnership that has been joined by Invest Aurora, the Illinois Department of Natural Resources, Fox Valley Park District and East Aurora School District that has gotten us to this point. As well as the support of Senator Linda Holmes, State Senator Linda Holmes, State Representative Stephanie Kiffewitt and State Representative Barbara Hernandez, as well as all of the other state representatives and state senators who have supported this project. Someone once said, "There will be obstacles, there will be doubters, there will be mistakes, but with hard work, there are no limits." And the difference between the impossible and possible lies in a team and a person's determination. Our hard work has only just begun. Our best is yet to come and our determination for the success of this project and community will never die. On behalf of Fox Valley Developers, we humbly ask for your support, approval, uh, approval of the redevelopment agreement that will allow us to create a new innovative living community in the Bardwell neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Before we take any questions, I, I, I want to set the, the stage of this conversation and I'm sure there'll be, you know, conversations to, uh, going forward with this development. You know, I'm an East Aurora Tom Cat through and through. Yeah, I make no, uh, no bones about it. Let everybody know. And, you know, these local guys here, um, are, uh, Wobonce warriors that are coming to, coming to the city looking to, looking to, uh, in, invest. Now, with all the Tom Cats we have here on, on the dais, and I know we got a couple now, you know, uh, I, I don't know about you, but if I'm ever going to go to battle and try to win a war, I want to go with a warrior. And, and these guys here are warriors. Not only are they, not only warriors for the city of Aurora, they're coming to Tom Cat community and making a huge investment that positively affects the east side and District one thirty-one and positively affects, I'll argue, the whole city of Aurora. This is the largest private investment that we've seen in generations on the east side of Aurora, maybe the largest ever. You know, I, I want to thank you gentlemen for believing in Aurora. Thank you for putting your money where your mouth is. Before you ask for a red cent of assistance for the city, you did what you said you were going to do. You know, now I'd be the first to say that a redevelopment such as this, uh, with use of historical tax credits, uh, both federal and state, new market tax credits, federal and state, bridge loans, construction loans, city investment, all of that is an extremely, uh, difficult financial concept. Unless you've been ensconced in the planning and negotiations with our CEO, accountants, auditors, other bankers, financiers, it's almost impossible to grasp. But know that this deal has been through the wringer more times than I can count, then sent back again simply for good measure. No deal is an absolute guarantee, but this one with all the players involved and all the research and all the hours put in is as close as we are going to get with a redevelopment of this size. Not a new development, this is a redevelopment, repurposing. Three hundred thousand square feet of a building has been sitting, falling into ruin for a quarter of a century. So, when I hear an alderman say, in front of everyone, for everyone to hear, that this complex has been vacant for twenty-five years, we should just simply wait another year before we go forward with it. You know, I think that's contrary to what a role of an alderman should be. It's disingenuous when you suggest that you're for the project as long as we wait. It's lacking in the ability to understand the big picture of what this administration is trying to accomplish. And I think it's just contrary to development in the city of Aurora. Now, is nine million dollars a lot of money? Absolutely. But in exchange, we get a hundred and twenty-eight million dollar project. Isn't Aurora worth it? Isn't the city, isn't the city's investment in this project worth it? Now, there'll be hundreds of union jobs for the next few years during construction. There'll be hundreds of permanent jobs after the redevelopment is complete. Who's going to tell those hard-working people they aren't worth it? There will finally be a safe and developed area for the Bardwell students of the oldest school district, the oldest school in the school district, to play. Who's going to tell them that that's too much money to invest for their future? Who's going to tell them that they're not worth it? Who's going to tell every citizen throughout Aurora and especially on the east side, "You aren't worth it"? I'm not. Because Aurora is worth it. And the cost of doing nothing or even waiting another year is a price that I'm not willing to pay. You know, I encourage all of us to think two to three years in the future. When we'll be able to take our families to enjoy the new parks and witness the renewed Bardwell community because we had the courage, fortitude and belief that through partnership, public-private partnership, we can succeed where others have failed or didn't even try. You know, I, I want to thank city of Aurora staff for putting the time and hours in, in working on this redevelopment agreement. I mean, we have our CEO Marty Lyons and, and, uh, David Debo. Not to be mistaken with David Dilbo. Debo. David Debo, man, they put so much time, effort, energy into this, meeting with me and Alex Alexandru on a regular basis to update us on what's going on day after day, week after week, month after month, when it felt like this project was going to fall apart and then we brought it back to life, brought it back together. Felt like everybody's going to walk away from the table, yet these guys stuck in there. They didn't have to. They could have took their money and their investment and went elsewhere. But they believed in Aurora and they stayed at the table and stayed strong to the success of this future development. And then, and to finish this development agreement. You know, and I, I think the brothers in the family who make up Fox Valley Developers, and I know all of them are related by blood, but I, I know the way that they have, they, they function is like family and they are not going to let each other fail. And we've got doctors and lawyers and, and, and guys that are already developers and construction workers. I mean, we got, we got the full mix of people that can make this successful. And they want to do it right here in Aurora, where they are from. You know, and I want to thank the Bardwell neighbors for their faith and patience that we can finally get this done and deliver you a renewed campus that restores pride, purpose and prosperity to this historically significant property and to the entire city of Aurora. So, as we have this conversation, let's be thinking about the future. Let's be thinking about making sure these guys are successful because their success is our success. Are there any questions or comments from the council?
Alderman O'Connor? Uh, uh, I'm, I'm sorry. There's been a motion, is there a motion? There's been a motion on the floor? There's been a motion, a second already?
It was going to be impossible for me to understand anybody who could meet the passion and enthusiasm of Mr. Pulakitis in presenting this, but you've done it, Mr. Mayor. You see what happens when you have-
He inspired me.
Two attorneys and here comes another attorney. I just am going to briefly say, I don't have a problem with any of the information that's been presented, any of the points that are being made in regard to why this council should adopt this plan. We've already covered a lot of that in the committee of the whole discussion. We've covered it in the finance committee and I think I've made my feelings very clear about my opinion as to going forward with this. The only problem I have, Mr. Mayor, is that I object to any lengthy discussion of preconditions over what we want to discuss or debate at the level of this council. I think your comments are appropriate, but I think that they're more appropriate at the time of the end of the discussion in regard to what direction we want to go. I have no idea what any of the council members are going to say one way or the other in regard to this. I suspect that we have a pretty strong majority here in wanting to move forward with this plan. And I have a concern that we kind of lay down, uh, the guidelines that we can't question anything in regard to this. Uh, I think we have the ability at any point to question anything about any plan, any program. And it may simply be trying to clarify, it may simply be trying to explain and, and better understanding of it. Uh, but I would prefer that we be able to have that frank exchange in regard to the council, uh, opinions and there may not be any here tonight and that's fine. I, I just want to indicate my feelings that there's, there's a couple of different things going on here and I, I, I fully support this, uh, development. I, I'm ready to proceed. I think it has, uh, been brought forward better than anything we've seen in the past in regard to the two components that I said as to what is the plan? And secondly, how is it to be paid for? Uh, and, and I'm satisfied in that review. Uh, I think, uh, I would urge my colleagues to join in, in adopting it, but I did have to make my comments, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor? Alderman, uh, I'm sorry, Alderman Denal?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. A- as you all know, uh, I am the alderman that represents the Bardwell neighborhood as I have for the last six years. And I will tell you, Mayor, they're not always been patient. Um, this is a neighborhood, uh, that has beautiful historic homes, great families, um, but for twenty-five years we've had this giant thing in our backyard, uh, which people have always wondered what we're going to do. And I don't, I think some people never thought it was going to happen. So, I'm here, uh, again, Mr. Pulakitis has done a wonderful job, uh, describing the process. I want to thank, uh, the, all the work of the staff to go through that very complicated, uh, development agreement to try to bring this together. I appreciate, uh, the work of the finance committee as well, uh, to further vet that. So, I know this is a big ask, uh, but this is a big project and it's going to have a great big impact. So, I would urge everyone, uh, to support this project tonight. I will be voting for it.
Alderman Lobshi?
So, I'll, I'll be the fourth, uh, lawyer to speak on this, uh, although we had one non-lawyer in, 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 in between. Um, I'm very pro-development, been a developer, got a lot of experience. Uh, we all want to see this, including myself. This is a great asset, it's a great, uh, project. I think we also have a fiduciary responsibility to the taxpayers and I think that it's not only the nine million, it's the six or seven million of interest that on top of the nine million if it doesn't work out. So, it's fifteen, sixteen million. Um, but I, uh, came into this with an open mind. I had three meetings with the Fox Valley Developers, including one today, uh, before we started the project, during and even today. Um, I read the thirty-five-page development agreement several times, cover to cover. I think that what they've lacked in experience, they have brought in consultants. I think the commercial still is, uh, the commercial aspect is the one that bothers me the most. The medical, uh, certificate of need. Um, if they don't get that, they lose the possibly this, no, they, they would lose the surgery center, the pharmacy, medical office and radiology, which is about one point six million, which means they would lose about one million a year and I don't know how long they could sustain that. But having my meeting today, um, I think that, uh, they've agreed that they would hopefully switch to residential, which I think makes more sense. So, the fact that they're being flexible and, uh, notifying us of that is a positive step. And my biggest concern is, do they, do they have the money? The development agreement says that they have to provide, uh, their personal financial statements to the staff. I have asked for those, but under the guise of confidentiality, which I respect and understand, I, um, have not seen those and I'm okay with that. I can only rely on what staff has certified for this, that they have plenty of money and they've given me, um, more assurances that there is plenty of money behind this if it doesn't go as well as they hope. And quite frankly, paragraph seven D or seven G provides personal guarantees. So, if they don't come through, they are personally obligated to pay back the nine million dollars. So, again, I do have, and, and they've been certified by their bank, the, the lender and the tax credit buyer, which are not easy feats to get, get approved. I still have serious concerns, but I'm not going to vote against it. I think it's great. I think it's great. Will create some jobs. My biggest concern was, will develop, will the contractors and subcontractors get paid? But, um, because of the staff's assurances, they have plenty of money to bring this through and switch, will switch to commercial if they don't get it to residential. I am going to support it. Um, but I do want to echo Alderman O'Connor, Mayor Protem's comments that it is the, all of us up here should be, um, facilitating open discussion and not cutting each other off and we should be allowed to ask developers questions.
Thank you. Alderman Franco?
Yeah, I just want to say that, um, I'm happy you put it, Mr. Pulakitis, in terms of a team. I, I get that, I understand that. Um, you presented a lot of good information about what's going to happen, the beauty of the future, all this stuff and the risk involved. But if we're ever going to be part of a team, and I look at the gentleman up here and I, I know that labor is involved and the, the financial institutions who are involved, this is somewhat of an all-star team. And if we're ever going to be part of a team, this is- And if we're ever gonna be part of a team, this is the type of team we want to be involved with because potential through being successful is gonna be great, just because of employers involved. So with that, in addition to everything you presented, I will be supporting this.
Alderman Seville.
Mr. Mayor. Uh, yes, um, I did comment favorably at the committee hall last week, so I just want to add that, um, I think this is a, uh, complex plan. It's not unlike other complex plans for redevelopment in the city, but it's a higher dollar amount, uh, for the amount of space that we have here, over three hundred thousand square feet, uh, of redevelopment. Um, I think there's a, a strong team that's been put together here, uh, and I think you have a good track record. Uh, you've already shown it with regard to the cleanup and environmentally of the property. Uh, I think the city has the vested interest in making sure this neighborhood succeeds. Uh, and, uh, again, I will be approving, uh, and, um, voting favorably, uh, for the project this evening and I wish you good luck. Um, I think you've, you guys have done a good job, uh, so far and you convinced me that, uh, you can do a better job in the future.
Alderman Hartburns.
Mr. Mayor, after twenty-five years, I have to say to the staff, Dave Debo, Marty Lyons, I know I'm old, but some of y'all may be older than me, y'all might remember this commercial, mm, good, mm, good. They say Campbell, this group here is, mm, good. You all have pulled together a team that has worked, mm, mm, good, to pull it together. All I can say, mm, I think that my dear brother, Carl missed the beat. Marty, you ready, Carl? Let's play ball. You the coach, you the referee, we ready to play ball. Cause at the end of the game, twenty-five years is a long time, but on this night, Aurora can see a real good change have come. And I like changes, changes is good. And the truth is, when the union is happy, mm, good, I'm happy too. Mm, mm, good. So, I thank you all for all that you've done to pull this together and you've pulled Aurora together. When you pulled the union out, you have pulled us together. Those brothers and sisters make this country what it is. But as I would say, mm, good, Avalon Heights, you all are real good. Thank you.
Was that the song from Good and Plenty or Campbell Soup? I can't remember. It's, I don't like that Good and Plenty. Alderman Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A little bit different perspective, um, from my end. Um, together, school district two oh four, school district one twenty-nine and school district one thirty-one, um, in a year, they educate approximately six thousand students with special needs. That's just kindergarten through twelve. If you add early childhood, which is age three to kindergarten and you add transition, which is eighteen till age twenty-two, you're looking at about eight thousand people in a year with special needs right here in our community. Those people have nowhere to go, nowhere to live. And I can speak to that firsthand because you all know, I have a daughter, twenty-eight year old daughter home with Down syndrome. She's a, she's, works in Aurora, she's an active member of the community in Aurora. She, um, has a great life, she has no opportunities for housing and all the people like her are in the same boat. For twenty-eight years, I've advocated for people with special needs and for twenty-eight years, the same problem has hit us. There's no place for our children to live. So, my personal thank you to all of you for giving this opportunity for some of the people in our community to have an option and a place to live. When they reach twenty-two, they drop off the system. There's nowhere to go, there's nobody to take care of them. And now they have Avalon Heights as an opportunity of a place for them to live. So thank you.
Alderman Yamas.
I just want to add as, as someone that was born and raised and still living in the near east side of Aurora-
And a lawyer.
Yeah, is that, I think the fifth lawyer now? I'll add that. Um, I guess I'll, I'll, I'll speak on, on the near east side's behalf and say that when it comes to investment and development in our part of town, it always feels like we get left behind. So, this is something positive for the neighborhood, for the east side, for the city in general, and especially for the, the kids across the street at the school there at Bardwell and in the neighborhood, besides it just being, we're getting rid of an eyesore. I mean, it's, it's, it's gonna greatly impact the neighborhood and it's, it's really nice to see this happening in our part of town and I hope this is just the, the first step in that direction. Thank you for all your work.
Any other questions, discussion? Clark, will you please call the roll?
Alderman Yamas.
Yes.
Alderman Garza.
Yes.
Alderman Denal.
Yes.
Alderman Franco.
Yes.
Alderman Seville.
Yes.
Alderman Hartburns.
Yes.
Alderman Smith.
Yes.
Alderman Bug.
Yes.
Alderman Lopshy.
Yes.
Alderman O'Connor.
Yes.
Ten A's.
Motion carries, the resolution is approved. Gentlemen, I'm gonna give you a say. All right, let the record reflect that Alderman. Third word, words coming back into the, uh, room. Alderman Mesiacos. All right, uh, request and referrals listed on the agenda are referred to the Planning Council and Planning Commission. Uh, is there a motion to accept and file the investment report? Is there a motion by Alderman Hartburns, seconded by Alderman Garza? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried by voice vote. Is there a motion to approve and pay the bills? Motion made by Alderman Hartburns, seconded by Alderman Garza with a clerk. Are there any questions on the bills? All right, will the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman Yamas.
Yes.
Alderman Garza.
Yes.
Alderman Mesiacos.
Yes.
Alderman Denal.
Yes.
Alderman Franco.
Yes.
Alderman Seville.
Yes.
Alderman Hartburns.
Yes.
Alderman Smith.
Yes.
Alderman Bug.
Yes.
Alderman Lopshy.
Yes.
Alderman O'Connor. Eleven A's.
All right, motion carries, bills are approved. There's been a motion to adjourn, Alderman Hartburns, seconded by Alderman Garza. All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting is hereby over.